Good evening and welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting. Today is Monday, August 25th. It is 5:53 PM. Voting members present in person, we have to my left, Councillor Anna Levy, and on Zoom, we have Councillor Selena Reyes and myself, Chair Councillor Infante. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the Public Safety Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may attend either here in the City Council Chamber or use any of our social media pages. At this point, can you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, the great and just and moral.
Councillors, we do not have any minutes to approve. We have two new businesses. I thought this one was tabled. The 71, right? Yeah, okay. So we have, and this was actually also tabled. Can I have a motion to untable item 232-25, Audit of the Lawrence Police Department for Fiscal Year 2025?
A motion.
Motion has been made by, I heard, Councillor Levy first, seconded by Councillor Reyes. All those in favor of Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Roll call, Councillor Anna Levy. Councillor Selena Reyes.
Yes.
And Chair Woman, Stephanie Infante.
Yes, and the motion carries. We do have the sponsor of this item, Councillor Wendy Luzon here with us this evening. Councillor Luzon, can you tell us a little bit more about this audit and your reasoning for having this agenda?
Good afternoon, Wendy Luzon, 11 Albion Street, Lawrence. Thank you, Madam Chair, and yes, I'm here to speak on behalf of the item that you have in front of you, the audit for the Police Department and why it's needed. As you know, Madam Chair and fellow colleagues, Councillor Levy and Councillor Reyes, we had had, in four years, we had had five Chief of Police in our Police Department, meaning that that is equal to five different administrations. So based on the lack of stability that we had in the Police Department for the past four years, I think this is needed. And I will read some of the reasons that I believe we should send this item to the full council for... So there are several strong reasons why the city like Lawrence might need an audit for the Police Department. And the first one is the financial transparency. As I mentioned at the beginning, five Chief of Police means five different administrations. And the community needs to know what happened, what had happened with the taxpayer money, how the taxpayer money has been used and if it has been used in a responsible way. It's also needed to verify whether overtime, equipment purchases, and federal state grants are being managed properly. As you know, as we know, we are in constant approving grants and we need to know if this money is going to where it's supposed to go. And I have trust that is been happening, but also we as a council need to inform the community. It's our responsibility for transparency and to keep the taxpayers informed. It's also a way to identify any waste or mismanagement or misuse of funds. Another reason is for operation efficiency. We need to know if the staffing level, if the resources are being deployed in the most effective way. We know that the Police Department now is in need of more officers. We are budgeted for, I think it's for 145, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, and we are not in full capacity. So where is this money that the council approved for this fiscal year budget? Accountability and trust. Residents, they deserve to know how the department operates and whether policies are being followed. An audit can reveal patterns of misconduct, complaints, disciplinary actions of internal investigation. We also know that the police has gone through a significant investigation in the past, but no information on how the money has been spent has given to this community. And I know that this will increase the public confidence in the Police Department. This is not a way of attacking or creating any conflict. I think an audit will bring accountability and trust for the community and for the department. We also need to check if the department is following state and federal laws. I know they are, but we need to be able to let the community know that this is happening. Community relationships, community relations, that will make the community relationship will keep the community, will make this relationship stronger between the Police Department and the community. And we also need to know what's the future plans for the department, where is the department is going, and what are their plans, where this money that we just approved for this fiscal year, where are they planning to spend this money? So in general, approving an audit for the Police Department will be a way to continue to build trust in the community and the Police Department. Like I mentioned at the beginning, we have gone through five different chiefs, which is equal to five different administrations. And I know the community have a lot of questions that we have not been able to answer. So I'm asking you to take this in consideration and to send it to the full council for review and for approval at the full council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Luzon. Any questions, Councillor Levy, Councillor Reyes, or comments?
Yes, I can.
Councillor Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is great. So I agree with so many things with you, you know, regarding having an hour. But not just only the audit for the Lawrence Police Department. A couple years ago or something, I request to do an hour and two with the department. And because the city has to pay $10,000, so we have to turn down all of this. Okay? So what I would like to hear at this time is before the sentencing, maybe to invite the city attorney. Just to come and give some advice on what it's going to cost to do an hour to the Lawrence Police Department. And then they don't come because they have to expense some extra money or they have to do this. And there are part of the hour that can't be done because the federal money or whatever is no part of the hour.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Levy. That's a great point that you're making. But I, months ago, I had a meeting with the mayor at the beginning of, well, almost a year and a half ago, not months ago. And he was willing to approve, because it's my understanding that it has to, if we vote in favor of this audit, it has to somehow be, the mayor's office will have to pay. Is that accurate, Madam Chair?
I'm not 100% sure if it comes directly out of the mayor's budget, but it does come out of, you know, the city. It does not come out of the council. It comes out of another budget within the city.
Exactly, yeah, thank you, yes. So I don't think it's going to cost the same amount of money that it will cost to audit.
An hour costs a lot of money.
But I mean, I'm saying, Councillor Levy, Councillor Levy, that I don't think it's going to cost them the same amount of money that will cost to do an audit of the school department based on the budget that they have, which is one of the largest budget in the city of Lawrence. But I think you're making a great point. We should double check. But once again, Mayor Brian DePena was in favor of doing this audit months ago, and I believe that perhaps he's still in favor in case that the money is not going to come.
I don't think so that the mayor is going to oppose because for many time, he's been saying the same, that it's going to, you know, he agreed. He agreed also with the, to do the audit for the school department. But after they come out that no him, you know, other department came and also the city attorney. So I would like to invite to this committee the city attorney and also the project, the person, the capful in this time to come and give some advice on how we can pursue, you know, or do it, all of these things. I agree with you. So I think so that many department has to be audit, okay? So we have an hour every year. And they always say, but this is like a special one, that we should also maybe do it. That is my comment at this time.
And thank you, Councillor Levy, for adding that. I think that it's important and yes. Madam Chair, if we, if your committee sends this to the general, to the full council, it will be, can we request the attendance of the attorney at that level just to keep this moving forward? Because it's been sitting in the agenda for long. And what we want here, and I think we all are on the same page, including Mayor DePena, we just want to make sure that the Police Department is efficient, accountable, and serving the people with integrity. And with this, we can, you know, make sure that the community knows what is taking place there based on the points that I mentioned at the beginning. So I'm asking my colleagues to send this to the full council because it's been sitting there for long. And we can, if we can take Councillor Levy's suggestion of asking the attorney to be present and base of the amount of money that it's going to cost, we can, you know, vote in favor or not vote in favor at the full council.
Thank you. Councillor Reyes, I see that you have your hands up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I look in the agenda right now, and I don't see any description. What is the request? I know my colleague is playing right now to the public, but I love to see because we request through every committee, every person to put the whole language when they request something. When I see the agenda, I don't see a couple things my colleagues mentioned a few minutes ago. She want to audit a different thing. I would love to see in paper, in writing, what is the request. I see, I writing almost 10 items to this request about why she want to see the audit to our Police Department. I disagree, but I would love to see the whole request in formal writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Luzon. What you just presented to us verbally, can you send a copy to all the Public Safety Committee members?
I will do that right now.
Myself, Councillor Reyes, Councillor Levy, and Councillor De Rosario who cannot make...
I will do that right now. You will get it right now.
Thank you. And I actually, a few, like a minute or two ago, I was on my phone and I was checking to see, I did request, just in case, I wasn't 100% sure how the conversation was going to go. So I did ask our confidential secretary to send an invite to the police chief, just in case. I was checking my email to see that if that was sent. I'm not 100% sure. Maybe she sent it, just didn't see me, I don't know. But Maria, can we put a note too, just to double check to see if there is, and include Chief Aguilar in the list of invitees? Please. Councillor Reyes, do you still have your hand up? I see. You're all set, okay.
I think the Madam Chair, the Chief of Police just got back from...
I know he was returning today. So he might have been caught up. But I just want to make sure, you know, double check that that invitation was sent to him. And if he couldn't make it tonight, then that he is included with the city attorney and the capful, just in case.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. And if I may, to give Councillor Reyes an answer, and you gave her an answer. We also asked for, you asked for the Chief of Police to be here. But basically, the point is to make sure that we have financial transparency, operation efficiency, accountability and trust, policy and compliance, to build, continue building in the community relationships between the Police Department and our constituents. And we, I think also to know about the future planning and to understand what happened under the five different chiefs of police that passed to the Police Department in the last four years. Those are the points that I'm making. But I will send this in writing to the committee and we'll take it from there.
Madam Chair. Councillor Levy.
Okay. I don't know if you have any question, but I would like to make a motion now.
I just have a comment. I'm okay with sending, I'm okay with sending this as a committee report and having this discussion at the full council. I'm sure there are other colleagues that have interest in an audit to the Police Department. I'm also okay with whether or not, whatever we decide as a council, whether to deny or...
Or approve.
Or approve, sorry. My brain is fogged up today. Or approve, that's okay. So I have also heard in the past the mayor's wants of having this audit as well. So I don't know where he stands currently, to be honest. I haven't had a conversation with him about this in a while. And what I heard tonight was, I think your conversation, Councillor Luzon, has been a while back as well. So the week will also give me an opportunity to connect with the mayor and see where he stands with this as well, given that it may most likely come out of his budget. So that is where I'm at with that. I know, Councillor Levy, you mentioned that you had a motion. So I don't...
My motion is like to table on, we have all of the information and all of the people requested to be present to the next committee.
So there's a motion to be tabled. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Councillor Anna Levy.
Yes.
Councillor Selena Reyes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Stephanie Infante.
Yes, and that is all. Thank you and happy...
Happy good night.
Great night, rest of your night.
Thank you.
So, uh, the, the week will also give me an opportunity to connect with the mayor and see where he stands with this as well. Um, given that it may most likely come out of his budget. So, um, that is where I'm at with that. I know Council Levy, you mentioned that you had a motion. So, I don't.
My motion is like to table on, we have all of the information and all of the people requested to be present to the next, uh, uh, committee.
So there's a motion to be tabled. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Um, Madam Secretary, can you call the rule?
Council Anna Levy?
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Stephanie Infante.
Yes. Um, councilors, uh, for the next, so I'm gonna re, I'm gonna schedule an, a public safety meeting at the next full council meeting. And I'm also just wanna give you guys a heads up to be prepared to look at the agenda that we have. We have many things that are tabled on this agenda. Some things are, are situations or topics that are reoccurring within our community that we periodically check on. Some things aren't, so I just ask committee members to take a, a double, double look at this. So we can be prepared to withdraw some items, um, that may probably no longer need to be on the agenda. All right, with that being.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, with that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Oh, okay. Second by Council Reyes. Uh, Madam Secretary, the rule.
Council Anna Levy?
Yes.
Council Selena Reyes?
Yes.
Madam Chair, Stephanie Infante.
Yes, uh, and that is all. Thank you and have a.
Happy good night.
Great night, rest of your night.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Personnel Committee meeting. Today is Monday, August 25th. It is now 6:20 PM. Voting members present today, we have to my right, Council Wendy Luzon, the Vice Chair of this committee, and to my left, Councilor Anna Levy. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the Personnel Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may either attend here in the City Council Chamber or use any of our social media pages. At this point, can you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God and the good soul of the great Jesus Christ.
Councilors, I'm going to take item 359-25 first. It is the re-classificate, reclassification of the ADA Coordinator position. And this was put on the agenda by our city attorney, um, Attorney Hooten, and also our Personnel Director. And I call her Director and Attorney, Attorney Garcia. We have Attorney Garcia here with us. Attorney, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just give me one second as I am out of order. Good evening, first and foremost. Uh, this is, this item is in front of you as attached, um, for the, and I understand that there's the, the ordinance meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. However, it's here in order for reclassification for our ADA Coordinator, uh, Mr. Richard Roger, yes, who is here with us, right here, right next to me. So I'll give him the floor. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council.
Good afternoon.
In my 25 years work of the City of Lawrence and very active in the City of Lawrence, this is the first time that I have to make this presentation. Thank you for allowing me to speak today and to educate you as to why classification of the ADA Coordinator should be amended to Class D to be comparable with other municipalities. I want to express to the City Council and to the mayor for your dedication to servicing our city and its residents, especially the disableds. First, I want to clarify, I'm not here to advocate for a high salary. But I'm here to advocate for a comparable salary to other local municipality ADA Coordinator salary. I have been dealing with this issue for over two years and I hope we could reach a positive resolution for the benefit of the city and for my benefits. It has been over three years since I have, since I have the pleasure to accept the position of the ADA Coordinator, even though I had a great job practicing law, making a high salary. I had, however, over time, I have noticed my salary is not fair, equitable, and just in comparison to other municipality ADA Coordinator salary. Now, I was planning to explain the different type of article in the regulation, one, two, three, four, five. I'm not gonna do that. I just wanna focus on Article Two. That's my responsibility. That involve, I need to make sure that city is in compliance, providing the disabled services and program. That's my, that's my function under Article Two. Now, I'd like to inform you, under the ADA Regulation, it mandated for every state and local government to have an ADA Coordinator. But it's not mandated to have a full-time ADA like Lawrence. In other places, the responsibility is dedicated to, to another person like the Human Resources, DPW, the Police Department, and so forth. So they, they do not have a full-time ADA Coordinator. In Lawrence, the reason we have a full-time Lawrence educator because it's mandated because too many lawsuits filed against this city for many years. In the past, as chairman to the Commission on Disability, we were, we were about to be taken to court by Department of Justice and the Massachusetts Secretary of State for violation of polling sites. I was involved with that. I was involved resolving the issue.
Thank you for that, by the way.
You're welcome. And by the way, I served volunteer for four years without compensation and acted like the ADA Coordinator. So salary is sometimes not a factor to me, but equitable is. A major legislative act was filed over a decade against the city in federal court. Resulted in a federal court decree. In that decree, Lawrence was erected to hire a full-time ADA Coordinator to solve issues and then fight under that further decree. Here I have a sample of the court decree. This had been pending over 10 years in the City of Lawrence. I was involved with this for about approximately 13 years. So I'm fairly knowledgeable and I have the unique skills to deal with its co-order and possible having dismissed. Now, usually the City Council will ask, have you compared yourself with other municipalities in the exit county? The answer is yes, but it's only one problem. There is no ADA Coordinator to compare to. North and Dover does have an ADA Coordinator, and Dover, et cetera. So what I did, I did the best, second best thing is, I contacted over 100 municipality, one by one. And you have to be careful the way you ask the question. You cannot ask them, do you have a full-time ADA Coordinator? Because the answer is yes. They're gonna think, I have, I have the Department of Public Work Director, a full-time job doing ADA work. That's a full-time job. No, that's not a full-time ADA Coordinator, unlike Lawrence. So, these are results that I obtained. I got information from Arlington. I got in, in information from Summerfield, and I got information from Cambridge, and I got information from Fermin Hand. I know the sample makes, maybe sounds small, but like I said, not every municipality has a full-time ADA Coordinator. So, the maximum salary of Arlington is $77,250. The maximum salary of Summerfield is 102,000, almost 103,000. The maximum salary of Cambridge is 100, almost 111,000. And the maximum salary of Fermin Hand is $79,000. As you can see, I didn't demonstrate, justify to you why my grade should be increased. I'm not asking for a high salary because I want to. I'm asking is because it's the right thing to do. It has been done before and could be done again. Now, as I indicated, this has been done recently. Recently, um, they submitted to a whole bunch of reclassification. Mainly the reclassification for the grant writer and reclassification for recycle coordinator. The classification they used is, there was a report that the city paid a bunch of money to and was defective. Particularly to the ADA Coordinator. No one interviewed me as part of that classification. And the comparison they used was not comparative. So once they were defective. Now, the City Council asked the Budget Finance Director, what was such classification for the reclassification for those two positions? In regard to the recycle coordinator, they have someone to supervise. Guess what? My position involves a lot of supervision. I have five commissions that have to make sure they're doing the right thing, make sure they're complying with the law. I, I have to look, seek for volunteer when we have an event. I have supervised them. Make sure there's no liability, make sure they're doing the right thing. So I do have indirectly supervising responsibility. In res, in re, in regard to the grant writer, the Budget Finance Director said, she writes grants. That's a unique skills. Guess what? I have, I have written many grants for the City of Lawrence. For the Police Department, I have brought over a million dollars plus in contribution for Department of Justice and for the state. For the City of Lawrence at the ADA Coordinator, although it's not my job description, I have written grants. And my grants beat for itself. We've been in violation for years. Those problems are being fixed. Who got it fixed? I did. And, and also I'd like to thank the support of the City Council and the support of the mayor of allowing me to apply for those grants. But the point is, I have a unique skill writing grants, and even the knowledge of ADA is very unique. It's constantly changing.
Thank.
So, uh... I don't know if you want me to continue. I was gonna be, I was gonna do a comparison with the.
No, I actually, if, if you allow me, Attorney Rodriguez, I, I want to, to say that, state this publicly uh, for individuals here in the chamber and individuals watching us from home, that under your work, we have Braille City, City Hall, um...
For the.
Direct, uh, what's it called? The, the, the.
Braille, yeah, Braille for the.
Sorry. We also improved our automatic doors. We also here, just here in the City Council Chamber, we have an area for, um, people who, who can't sit in our, you know, benches. And you've made a lot of improvements. You noticed where we have been in violation. And I know you've been working hard with the commission, with the mayor's office, and also with the City Council to make improvements. There's still much to do, but we are, we are making progress and I, and I wanna thank you. And on top of that, you also, um, you also were able to, we, we raised the, the Disability Awareness Month flag for the first time ever in the City of Lawrence. And I thank you for, for the work, uh, that you did with that. And I think my colleagues are aware as well of, of the, of, of the work and why, and I believe we understand why this is in front of us today. I wanna give the opportunity to my colleagues to make, I know I have one question for the HR Director, but I'm gonna leave that for last. I wanna give the opportunity to my colleagues, um, to see if they have any comments or questions in general regarding this agenda item. Council Levy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I just only wanna thank, I say, thank you, Richard, for all the work that you've been doing. So, inclusive of the last three years. And before you being an employee, you worked very hard with me when we find out about the zoo and about all of this, the problem that we have at the different boarding places that were not in compliance with the ADA. So there were so many things that we saw during the time for almost three years. We were looking every single place. We were working and trying to figure it out, the way on how we can, uh, uh, be working also with the Justice Department. And through you and your work and your commitment to the city, we were able to, to solve many problems. Thank you so much.
And even actually, as Council Levy was speaking, I was looking around, I'm like, we still have some improvements to make even here in the chamber.
We have.
To make it more accessible. Uh, but we're working on that and.
But, but I'd like to stress, you know, somewhere, someone in another department, I'm not gonna say, they say, oh, your position is new, ADA, therefore you cannot have an increase. This position have been announced in 2016, even beforehand.
Thank you for that. Um, Council Luzon?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do have a question. So, you correct me if I'm wrong. If the committee, when, if the full council approve of this, from where are we getting this money?
So that is, we have the, so that's part of, the position is currently under the DPW budget. Okay. You have the floor, counselor.
So my question will be, it's, can it be taken from the DPW budget as it is right now, or do we need to apply for a grant?
I don't believe so. I think in my conversations with, uh, the DPW Director, it, the actual position was budgeted in its full capacity. So you would have money where to get it from?
From the.
From the DPW budget. That, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, Director Garcia?
Yes, ma'am.
So the reason why we have this item in front of the Personnel Committee is mainly to review the job description, et cetera, ensure that it reflects the day-to-day operation. So my question to you is, has the HR Department done, I don't know, like a, a responsibility or duties audit to ensure that what's being done currently, what has been done in the past, is reflective on the, in the job description?
So I kind of revamped a little bit of the job description myself, um, and I did send it to, uh, Attorney Rodriguez as well, and he was in conformity with that.
Okay, and this is the one that we have in front of us?
That is correct.
All right, so I did review this. All right, perfect.
Madam Chair.
Council Luzon?
So in this restructure of this position, are we adding new responsibilities or are we keeping what we have now?
So what we had agreed to and in, uh, along with, um, Senior Advisor Octavian Spanner was that if there were going to be, depending on what grade he was gonna go up to. So if he went up just one grade, um...
And what is that grade that this would be going up to?
He would be going up to, in the Collins Center, it's, I think, grade D? Right. So it depends on how, how much we're gonna go up. If he goes up two grades as requested, there would be some additional job responsibilities.
Do you have that salary range for grade D?
I believe the max for grade, grade D.
Yep. I, sorry. Thank you, Council Luzon. Let me read that, just to have it on the record. So the, so, so the current grade that he is in, the salary range is $45,500 to $72,800, which will then will go up to grade D. And that salary range is 87, um, $68,700 with the max being $104,000. Just supposed to have that on the record. Um, I see that the senior, senior advisor wants to speak, Advisor Spanner.
Yeah, very short. Uh, good evening. Octavian Spanner, Senior Advisor to the Mayor. Madam Chair and councilors, good evening. The, um, we, we've been working on this for, what?
For two years.
Two years, working.
I got gray hair over here.
Yes, yeah. And, uh, to be quite honest with you, and I, with no disrespect to our, uh, other departments, but, uh, Richard, and through him, because there's two things. One is the position, so in the future, if he's not there in the position, we would also welcome someone with, that has the knowledge and with, uh, their own disability to be working with this. There's a difference when you have an individual that is, let's say, knowledgeable by books, by certain experience. But this is a living experience, and that's the reason why Richard does it with very much passion. Uh, and I think with the amount of employees, we have very few disabled employees, and this would be also an encouragement. Well, I'm disabled as well. And you have other, uh, people with disabilities that will be encouraged in the future to also participate and not see in it as a handicap. And Richard works independently. Any question that he has doesn't go necessarily to the attorney, only when it's necessary. Because there's many legal implication that if you have a normal person, let's say, a, a, a layperson working in the ADA capacity would not understand, and if you're a person with a legal background.
I was gonna say that, and thankfully, the person, the position currently has that legal background and understands how to read our laws, so.
Right. And, and in addition, uh, Madam Chair, is that obviously the Collins Center, uh, when they did their job, the, the work, uh, it was very difficult for me to review it, to go through all the items. We had discussion with the HR Department. We had, uh, and the director is not here tonight. Uh, that's the reason why I'm here. And, and, uh, Richard also, together, we've been working on it to make sure that this position, not the individual, but the position is, is compensated correctly.
Thank you. Any other, Council Levy?
I, I have a question, Madam Chair.
We're gonna go to Council Levy, and then we're gonna go back to you, Council Luzon.
I don't know who can, who can answer me this, but Richard mentioned a couple of times that we don't need a full-time.
Did I say that?
I, I think his statement was, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, by statute or by law, Lawrence requires a full-time ADA Coordinator.
By, by court order.
By court order.
Okay. Because what I understood is, I mentioned, you mentioned a couple of times.
Yes, I did.
Okay. That, that they don't need a full-time ADA Coordinator, but.
Other municipalities are in, in need of it because they had not been in, found in violation of, um, ADA. because they had not been found in violation of ADA laws.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Luzon?
So is this, so you were hired for this position, they gave you a contract, or this is a regular?
This is a non-contract position.
Non-contract position.
That's correct.
Okay.
So will a contract be?
Issue?
What was it, is it gonna stay the same?
It would stay the same.
So you're saying that?
As far as I know.
So if we restructure this job, he's gonna be given a contract?
Not to my knowledge. We have actually not discussed that, so that's probably the answer that I should be giving. We have not discussed a contract.
The answer is no.
Are you okay with that, Richard?
Sure, I know under contract, but only a few are under contract. Basically, five are under contract, I don't know what.
But you're gonna?
I'm okay.
Are you okay with that? Thank you.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. I'm sorry, we do have the Chair of the Commission here.
Oh, yes.
If the Chairwoman would like to say anything, or if she's.
I'd like to be the.
Sorry, I should have introduced you first, but.
Oh, no.
Counsel President, since you are in the chamber, just something that Counselor Levy just noted, for the improvements, the renovation of the chamber, we should have two mics, one at the podium and one. Thank you, Counsel President. I'm sorry, Chairwoman, continue please.
I just want to read from a letter that I wrote a few weeks ago to the Mayor regarding this issue, because I can't say it any better than I said it in this letter. "I'm formally and enthusiastically recommending that ADA Coordinator, Richard Rodriguez, be promoted from grade E to grade D in recognition of his outstanding service, deep expertise, and unwavering commitment to the City of Florence. With over thirty years of experience in disability advocacy and accessibility issues, Richard is more than deserving of this advancement. He is a trusted and invaluable resource, not only to me as a chairperson of the Disability Commission, but to countless residents who rely on his voice, his advocacy, and his results. His guidance has significantly contributed to my own effectiveness as a leader, and I know I speak for many when I say that Richard is the person we count on for sound advice and meaningful action. The Commission has discussed this matter at length and voted unanimously in support of his reclassification. This vote and my recommendation are based on the statistical analysis of the statewide data which disclose the highest salary for a full-time ADA Coordinator is a hundred and ten thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Therefore, raise to grade D, which is a maximum of a hundred and four, is more in line with municipalities of this size." For most of the, most of the towns in this survey were smaller than the size of Florence. His contributions to our city extend way beyond consultation. Richard's grant-writing efforts brought much-needed funding into Lawrence, allowing for crucial ADA upgrades to City Hall, an achievement that stands as a tangible example of his dedication and impact. His efforts have consistently portrayed the City of Florence in a positive light, garnering public attention not only for the ADA office, but for the current administration in general. Richard is not only loyal to the city, he's a steadfast advocate for our disabled residents. He ensures their concerns are heard, their rights are protected, and their needs are addressed, always with professionalism, empathy, and effectiveness. His tireless work makes our community stronger, more inclusive, and more just. Considering his accomplishments, loyalty, and continued service, I urge you to approve the elevation of his position from grade E to grade D. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Counselors, at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, motion to send it to the full council with favorable recommendations?
Discussion.
Motion has been made by Counselor Levy, there's a second.
Second discussion?
Second discussion, Counsel Luzon.
I'm just gonna make this comment for the record. So we have in front of us a petition to, to classify this job up to a grade, to another grade. But isn't that the Mayor's Office's responsibility of the Human Resource to advocate for this position? It looks like we are giving him a raise. It looks like we are interviewing him, and he's advocating for himself. And we keep, we keep. The Senior Advisor mentioned a few minutes ago that not to mention, that this is not related to the person that holds the position right now, but for future reference, I think that it's the job of the Human Resource Department or the Mayor's Office to advocate for the position. But now it looks like that we're gonna, we are here interviewing Mr. Rodriguez, and it looks like that he's basically asking us for a raise, just for the record and for future references.
Yeah, Madam City Counselor, the, I can understand how you would think that, and I'll be very candid with you. This position, like Richard mentioned, is a position that other communities, they're doing, is not a full-time position. You have the, let's say, a Director, like he mentioned, of Public Works. Department of Public Works is doing the job. So this is a novelty for us. This is something new. And when we had the initial discussions, like Richard said, for two years, we have been talking about it. Sometimes we need to, and if you listen to Richard, he said it very carefully. "I'm here to educate," because he had to educate us. There were challenges, and I'm gonna say there were challenges. Some people then see that, okay, it was necessary, why? Bunch of questions. And so I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, because this is a very good, and what Richard went through shouldn't have happened. And yes, you are correct. But we did submit it, because it's not the executive branch, in this case, that would reclassify. So we had to come before you after many discussions, many hesitations, going back and forth, because he doesn't work directly, he works under a Director as well. So.
Director who?
Of DPW. He works under DPW for, so we were trying to see what way that we can accommodate the salary, but unfortunately, we couldn't do it, and we didn't have the information available for us to come before you until we did in-depth research of it. And which, Richard himself, not only being a person who's disabled, he's in charge of the position, had to go and do his research as well. And we looked at it and presented to the Mayor. That's the reason why I came before you.
Thank you, Senior Advisor. I guess, mention that for future references. Because Richard, we know Richard. I know Richard for many years, and I know his passion, and his commitment for the city and the community, especially for what he's serving right now. But for the future reference, I think it will be more appropriate to have the administration on the Human Resource or the Director of the Human Resource to come in front of us and advocate for a job classification, instead of us talking directly to the person that is holding this job now. But I think we are only in agreement that we know what he's doing and his commitment for the city and for the people that he serves. But I just wanted to add that, to put that out there for future references and for the record. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Alright, so there's a motion to send to the full council, the favorable recommendation properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes have it. Attorney Rodriguez, Director Garcia, we will see you guys at the full council for this item. And Senior Advisor, you're always there. Thank you. We're gonna move on, we're gonna go back to the top of the agenda, which is item 342-25, the confirmation to appoint Charlene Pasqual as the Director of Community Development, and it was put on the agenda by our HR Director. Director slash Attorney Garcia, Director, you have the floor.
Good evening. We're here in front of you tonight for the appointment of Ms. Charlene Pasqual. Yes, absolutely, sorry, I'll start all over again. We're here tonight, first and foremost, Carol Garcia, Personnel Director. We're here tonight for the appointment of Charlene Pasqual as the Director of Community Development. For your consideration, in front of you, you have the opinion of the City Attorney, you have a copy of the ordinance pertaining to the set position, a copy of the job posting, and a copy of the application and the resume of Ms. Pasqual. I'll introduce Ms. Pasqual today, and we'll accept any questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pasqual, you have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Counselors. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you today. I'm honored and delighted to be here. I have a few words for you guys before we start. So for the record, my name is Charlene Pasqual, 360 Merrimack Street, Suite 270, Entrance K, Lawrence, Mass. Good evening, Madam Chair and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Charlene Pasqual, and I'm both humbled and proud to stand before you today. I have been appointed by Mayor Brian DePena to serve as the Acting Director of Community Development, and respectfully seek your confirmation. As a lifelong resident of Lawrence, born and raised in this vibrant, resilient, and beautiful diverse city, my connection to this community is not only professional, but it's deeply personal. This is my home. I am Lawrence. It has shaped me, and I have dedicated my life to giving back. What makes me the most qualified candidate for this position goes beyond a resume. It's my record of service, my lived experience, my faith in this city, and my unwavering commitment to build people up. I'm a single mother of four beautiful children. I have navigated the challenges of maternity, multitasking, and motherhood while pursuing personal growth and professional advancement. I know what it means to juggle responsibilities while showing up for my community with excellence, with compassion, and with strength. My experience reflects the resilience of so many women in this city who lead with grace while carrying the weight of multiple roles. I have also had the privilege of helping my family run multiple family-owned businesses, both locally and internationally, gaining entrepreneurial experience and skill set that no classroom could ever provide. From operations to customer service, to logistics, to marketing, I have learned how to build from the ground up and serve others with excellence. I have had seasons of abundance, and I've had seasons of lack. I've had it all, and I've had nothing. But no matter the circumstances, I have always shown up with the same purpose, to serve with integrity and to help others see the light of Jesus in me. In a community that is building resiliency, I choose to focus on healing, on empowerment, and on transformation. In a community, I believe in community development, and it's about more than just policy. It's about people. It's about equity-centered planning. It's about neighborhood revitalization, inclusive engagement, and capacity building. It's about building communities where every resident, regardless of their zip code, side of the city, background, political preference, or circumstance, has the opportunity to strive. For almost twenty years, yes, I'm dating myself. For almost twenty years, I've worked across the sectors to help shape lives. In legal advocacy, I have helped over two-hundred-and-fifty families avoid foreclosure, fighting for their right to remain in their homes and build stability. In financial literacy and insurance, I've educated families on how to create generational wealth, lead a team of agents, and empower others to do the same. In nonprofit outreach, I have coordinated food distributions, assisted with housing placements, and walked alongside those facing crisis. Within the Office of Planning and Development, which I have been part of for three years, I have worked on zoning, land use, housing, strategic partnerships, and bringing administrative insight to the community center leadership at the table. I'm also a notary public, and I have provided free professional services to hundreds of residents in our city. Whether assisting with immigration documents, affidavits, housing applications, or any legal forms, I have been a trusted resource for those who often have nowhere else to turn. I also translate for individuals, understanding firsthand the barriers of our immigrant community face, I'm sorry, understanding firsthand the barriers our immigrant communities face when language becomes a wall between them and critical services, as you guys have seen in the most recent fires on Lowell and Oxford. I have made it a mission to bridge that gap, because access, dignity, and understanding should never be denied due to language or understanding. I began my journey in leadership as a youth minister over twenty years ago. Since then, I have mentored and invested in the next generation, reminding them that they matter, that they are seen, and that they are capable of shaping their futures. Academically, I have pursued studies in creative industries, driving creativity and innovation. I had enrolled in criminal justice and law, and a law program driven by the desire to create a systematic change. Though my studies have been paced to honor my responsibilities as a mother, my educational journey continues, because I believe learning is a lifelong tool for advocacy and transformation. Since stepping into this role, I have led the department, I have led the department on the first strategic plan for community development. This framework is bold. It's community-led, and its vision centered on housing, justice, economic mobility, environmental equity, faith-based institutions, aligning with over a hundred partners, resident-led groups, nonprofit organizations, faith-based institutions, and cultural organizations, because real transformation only happens when we work together. I want to be a liaison between the city, the City Council, nonprofit organizations, and our community. I want to be the glue. I believe in Lawrence, where every resident feels seen, heard, and valued. Where not, where not just running programs, we're creating pathways. Where the Department of Community Development becomes a catalyst for lasting and measurable changes. I am ready to lead with integrity, with transparency, and with heart. I know this city. I serve this city. And I believe with everything in me, it's within my potential. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time and your consideration and the opportunity to serve the city of Lawrence, my city, our city, with a bold vision and unwavering love. Charlene.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. No clapping in the chamber during session. Thank you. Thank you. That was a very heartfelt letter. I think we can all agree on that. Before we start, I know we have a full chamber. I want to make sure that every individual within this chamber understands that the questions, there might be some tough questions and it's nothing personal, as Ms. Pasqual knows, she's been in front of the council many times. We're here to do a job and we are here to, we are the ones responsible for asking questions. I also, before we get into comments and questioning, I do want to thank you for your job in the recent fires. I was in constant communication with the District Counselor, Council Vivian Marmol during that time and I know you two were constantly communicating and and I know she was very satisfied with the work that you did and I did went to see you at the site and you had everything under control. So it was a really big fire. Was not easy, but it might have been your first fire, I think.
It was actually my eighth fire.
Your eighth fire, okay.
In four months.
In four months, okay. I was not aware of that. So your eighth fire, but thank you. Thank you for the work that you did with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, and now the tough part. I have, I have, I'm gonna start it off. I have a few questions for the HR Director. Director Garcia, when, when was Ms. Pasqual announced as active director for this position?
I literally had it on my computer.
I'm sorry, Ms. Pasqual.
It's April, I believe it was April 1st.
April 1st.
Or something along those lines. I know that that's the email that went down, April 1st.
Okay.
It went down to the clerk's office. I'm not sure whether or not it was acted upon shortly after that.
Thank you. And I believe when was the position?
The position was posted, I assume your question is?
Yep, so I see here January 28th, 2025.
That's correct.
It was closed February 14th, 2025. How many applicants did we have?
We had a total of four, including Ms. Pasqual.
Okay. And I Ms. Pasqual mentioned in her, in her speech that it goes beyond resumes. And I, and I do agree with that to an extent. However, we do, this position is ordinance and an ordinance is a law of the city. Do we have, within those applicants, did we have any that, that meant the minimum qualifications of this position?
From the top of my head, I believe there may have been one, but not with a master's in urban planning as required by the ordinance.
So according to the ordinance, it says masters in urban development or equivalent. And the applicant that we have, the application that we have here did have a master's and MBA specifically, which qualifies as an equivalent educational requirement.
I believe there may have been two now that I have these right in front of me.
Alright, my second, oh, sorry.
There's, I'm sorry. There was someone with a bachelor's in anthropology and sociology. That was one candidate and the second candidate, give me one second. Wasn't too clear. It says various colleges, universities, New Hampshire Law, other, and masters, graduate, undergraduate, and that's about it. Those were the two, aside from Ms. Pasqual. The other applicant does not have a bachelor's to my, and I will confirm that while I stand here, so I don't miss.
Thank you. It's okay. As I continue, I have a few more. About two additional questions or three. Before I continue, I want to say this for the record. I am very conflicted with this agenda item because I know, and I know we shouldn't be speaking of individuals, but I know the individual in front of us for this confirmation has been doing a great job. But as a city counselor, I also wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask these questions and wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask questions of constituents that have come before us. So I will be, I will be asking these questions and I hope to get a truthful response from the Director, the administration, whomever has, or even Ms. Pasqual herself, whomever has the answers to these, to these questions. My second comment is that it appears that within the city we have inconsistencies in how non, actually before, before I go there. I believe, and correctings are wrong, I believe the acting director is already at the maximum capacity of the salary range. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. It is also my understanding that the acting director also received a radioactive additional pay of about $12,000. Is that correct? I'm seeing yes, okay. So going back to my comment, it appears within the city that we have inconsistencies of how non-union employees get raises or salary increases. It appears that those with political connections get those raises and those that do not, don't. My question to you, Director, do we have a a method, a process to determine how these raises are actually determined? I know for the union contracts, they're evaluated every six months and that determines the raises. Is there something in the works if we don't have anything to help determine because?
If I may address both of those, those points. To your first point, so in acting capacity, according to the ordinance, and I don't have it directly in front of me, so I can't quote it particularly, but in an acting capacity, you can be, or should be, that is the operating word, should be at the minimum. However, you, a department head may request that that salary be changed up to the midpoint range.
Got it.
If, if they have the qualifications, the experience, and so on and so forth.
Got it.
Now that's pertaining to that point. Second, I think it's, it's important to note that Ms. Pasqual has been working as an asset manager as well. So that's probably where the difference comes in as well.
Okay. Thank you. And in terms of how?
And at one point, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, at one point, she was also doing the job of the homeless coordinator as well, which is why she was present in a total of eight fires as of right now.
Got it. And also, this is why it is important to ask these questions so we can get answers and clarifications. But in general, I'm not, I'm there is still that appearance and overall, and this isn't the first time that you've heard this, Director Garcia, within the council, especially during the budget hearings about salary increases and how that's determined, etc. Last time this was brought up, I believe the HR department was going to start some type of process. I know for evaluations and is this part of the, the process that you're looking to develop within the HR department?
Quite frankly, I have not discussed that with the administration.
Okay, well, I would appreciate if you add that because obviously it's a concern and it's being, it has been brought up and this is the reason why I'm asking it. It was brought up by a constituent and people are paying attention.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, can you repeat that comment?
Yes. So the question that I was asked, is there a process or determination on how non-union employees are receiving their salary increases? Because there appears to be inconsistencies within individuals who are politically aligned or connected compared to those who are not. And I know that, that's more an opinion, but I'm just telling you guys what was said to me and I'm here doing my job.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, first of all, and this is the one to address the candidate that is before us. But before I answer that part is that it's kind of difficult. I voted for people that think they, that I voted, I mean, that they thought I voted for them. I didn't vote for them. So appearance might be, votes are a secret. Second of all, in regards to relatives, friends, family members, this is, you know, starts back, some people have 25, 30 years working in the city of Lawrence.
Right.
And kind of difficult. Everybody has one way or the other, family members, cousins, distant cousins. And that doesn't necessarily mean that they are politically, and they are not treated, at least to my knowledge, there has been friction because there has been individual comments by employees. But in terms of work, even if they, we suspect, because you never know if someone is for you or against you, and that does not have anything to do with the work. In this department specifically, we have a director. There was a knowledge of the individual, but no political link with the individual. We went base on each one of them and remember, there were eight employees that resigned voluntarily. They were not pushed, intimidated. They were just asked if they feel comfortable. All employees in the city had it. We have Frank Sorillo, who's the Director of Economic Development, has a master's degree. We have the Director of the Department, OPD, that has a bachelor's degree. We have a the Planning Director, as you know, that has been working for many years, that is also a former attorney and is still working with us, very knowledgeable individual. And we have the other director who is the is the Director of Project Management and Development that has a master's degree.
But I think attorney, I was about to call you attorney. Advisor, spanner, I think you just, with that being said, you just highlighted the point that mostly, if not all the individuals, aside from the current individual we have in front of us this evening, either have a bachelor's or a master's degree within a department that is required by the ordinance of each of each position.
Correct. And I would like to mention that as well. And we're knowledgeable of it. But first of all, the, in this case with Charlene Pasqual, Ms. Pasqual have gone to college. Okay, if I'm not mistaken, if we look at it, it's above a, an associate degree. She has function in the capacity.
Point of, it is, it's an associate's degree. We have her resume in front of us.
Right. Well, I can leave that to the candidate to defend herself. The other portion and the reason why her name was brought before you, because since all we have, all these individuals that worked during this administration, during this administration, and prior administration, were not able to present a strategic plan for community development. We have currently 15 projects that went before, that is in the pipeline for development. Plus, we have three that in the next coming weeks, so they're going to be around 19 to probably 20, but 19 I can account for. As a matter of fact, we just met. But what happens is, doesn't make any sense for us to have development, which we have spoken so many times without having a strategy, a pathway for us to deal with community development. And that's a subject that sometimes people are confused. Community development is to work with the community, to make sure that we do capacity building and prepare resiliency within the community. And in this case with Charlene, what we have saw, and I think she stressed a little bit tonight, is concerning her skills. She's very versatile in her capacity. She's local. She's an individual that has proven the skills and being proactive. And I've, we have given her that task before coming before you. I wish the Director would have been here, but she's on vacation. And likewise with Richard, the Directors would have been here. But in her case, it is, she has shown and without plagiarism. Because this is another thing we check for as well, because you can prepare a document and when you go back, it's something.
Don't you love AI?
Yeah, exactly. And sometimes it's useful. However, in this case, we have worked together based on the projects that we're going to have because the growth is going to be, is going to be significant if we meet. And in this case, Charlene would be an individual that this administration feels comfortable to be working with at the level of professionalism and understanding of the subject.
Thank you. Advisor, Senior Advisor Spanner, going back to, to the actual, the determination, I do believe the administration with the HR department should, should look into a structured progression plan or process because although it's not, how can I word, although it's not part of the official process, though the political alignment aspect has been mentioned during discussions in the city council many times throughout these years. And I think I believe that in order to improve that or to show that that's not really the case, as I'm hearing right now in other discussions that the administration argues, we should have a formal structure in place, just like we have for the union employees.
Yes, and we have, we have spoken with our HR Director. We're giving her time because Lawrence and the amount of employees that we have is challenging because of that. So previous to our current Director of Personnel Department, that's how it's legally said, is we have employees that have never had a, an evaluation. That was the first thing that we encountered during, when we took office. And when you ask why, because that also builds morale when someone, because sometimes people think that evaluation is bad, but it's a review and how you're going, what are the needs. Unfortunately, in this case, I can say with our HR Director, Carol, that she didn't have the opportunity as yet, but we had to have discussion as to each one of the employees would have an opportunity for evaluation. And politically, the office of the mayor is the only office that you can say, yes, we politically connected because we come and go with the mayor.
Fair.
Thank you.
Fair, okay. I want to say, the first time we spoke about, at least with this current council, about a process, I was back in May, I believe. We're entering September. And even though I hear your point about it could decrease morale, at the end of the day, this is an employer. If the city of Lawrence was a private entity, every person goes through an evaluation. I think it's even more important for a municipality to have some type of structure. And Attorney Garcia, I hope that this is on your list of priorities. I'm sure it is, but I get it.
There's a couple of things on my list of priorities, but right now I'm in negotiations with over 15 unions.
Yes, I've heard.
And every single one of the unions would have to agree to a performance.
We're talking about the non-union.
With non-union, that's a different story.
That's specifically what I'm referring to.
They're a different story.
Madam Chair. Well, I have two more and then I know you guys are eager. Two things, I'm going to close it with this. The city council received an email, a not-so-flattering email regarding the applicant. And I do have one, there was one sentence that did caught my attention that seemed a bit alarming and I'm hoping to get clarification when I ask this question. And then the second is, I wasn't alarmed by it, but I think it's important to still ask. There was, there was a comment about not knowing things, etc. I just want to know, have there been any from your knowledge or even the mayor's or the department's knowledge of Ms. Pasqual being reported or, or a statement say that she hasn't been doing her job or that, you know, she, or that she doesn't know? Or that it, and before I say that she doesn't know, we don't know anything and I'm hoping that you, and I'm sure that you go to your director and and you know, I hope you have that support with the department. But in writing, or has there been any complaints or anything about Ms. Pasqual to your knowledge?
I want to be very careful how I answer that because that might be I want to be very careful how I answer that, because that might be a reputational question, that may require an executive session.
Okay. Cool. All right, um. Another, I don't know this. There was another statement within that email regarding rental assistance.
I may wanna put on the record as well that I have, I have not read the email. I very briefly heard about it. But I do not, I didn't read the email, so I don't know what the email contains.
Okay. It's the last sentence in, in this email and states allegedly, I don't know, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask this. Allegedly, uh, it, it states that allegedly Ms. Pasqual has used the city's rental assistance program to pay her own rent. Um, I want some clarification if this is true or not. And I think the only person that can answer this is Ms. Pasqual, and I wanna give her the opportunity to, to.
I think that may be a reputational question as well.
So, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go to executive session.
Motion has been made properly seconded. I believe Madam Secretary may need a roll call for this. Oh, uh, sorry, the e- the reason to go, to go into executive session, that we may have questions that may be verputa- that could be seen as reputational, personnel, personnel issues, thanks. Um, Madam Secretary, can you please call the rule?
Counselor Wendy Lusson?
Yes.
Counselor Anna Levy?
Yes.
Madam Chair Stephanie Fonte?
Yes. Motion carries. I ask, uh, that everybody please clears out the, the chamber. Uh, Ms. Pasqual, I'm gonna ask you to stay with us. I, I just wanna make sure that you have the opportunity. Thank you. Actually, can we, no, we're gonna, we're gonna go in here. We're gonna go in here. Um, Director, Madam Secretary, I would like for you to join us as well. Counselors and Ms. Pasqual.
So for the record, we're being authorized to go back there.
Yes.
All right, councilors, can I have a motion to return from executive session?
Motion to return to executive session.
To return to public sessions, sorry.
To the public say, uh, to the personnel committee.
Motion has been made by Councilor Levy, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Luzon. Madam Secretary, can we have the roll, please?
Councilor Wendy Luzon.
Yes.
Councilor Anna Levy.
Yes.
And Madam Chair Stephanie Infante.
Yes, thank you. Councilors, any other questions or comments pertaining to item two, I mean, sorry, three forty-two dash twenty-five? Councilor Luzon.
Chair, I would like to ask Charlene.
How long have you been in this position, for how long?
I've been acting since April.
April first.
Yes.
Councilor, are you also a councilor?
Yes.
Councilor Levy, are you, you're good?
I have a motion.
Okay, before the motion, I do want to say, councilors, there is a thirty-day time period on appointments if the council does not make a decision within thirty days. The individual that the administration brings before the council is automatically appointed. So I would rather not keep this in the personnel committee. I believe I suggest that this committee makes a motion to send this up as a committee report to the full council.
Motion to send it to the committee, to the council with, as a committee report.
Motion has been made by Councilor Levy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Luzon, discussion. One comment. Ms. Pasquale, thank you. Thank you for, for your, for standing here strong and answering our questions and, and giving face and for, again, the recent work that you did. I do want to emphasize that, it was a lot of work and I appreciate your willingness to work with us and I appreciate your willingness to, to participate in this process, so thank you.
And to answer.
And to you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Councilor Wendy Luzon.
President.
Councilor Anna Levy.
Yes.
And Madam Chair Stephanie Infante.
Yes. Motion carries. So we will see you at the next full council meeting, which is next Tuesday at seven PM for the second round of this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. You have an, why don't you? I thought you were just here because we have budget and finance after this. All right, well, thank you, Ms. Pasquale.
Thank you so much.
We'll see you next week.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Have a good evening. Sorry, Council President, I thought you were here for budget and finance. Council President, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Everybody thought that I was just supporting.
I thought you were just here. I did not receive communication that you, I'm assuming this is a school committee stuff.
Yes, yes.
Do you want to, let's take this as a package.
Yes, item eighty-nine, nine and anyone.
Can I have a motion to, on table as, as a package? Item eighty-nine dash twenty-five, creation of job description and posting for school committee appointee education, ninety dash twenty-five, creation of job description and posting for school committee appointee finance, item ninety-one dash twenty-five, creation of job description and posting for school committee appointee legal, and that's all.
So move.
Motion has been made by Councilor Levy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Luzon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Council President.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and the members of the, of this committee for the opportunity to speak on item eighty-nine twenty-five, ninety twenty-five, and ninety, ninety-one twenty-five, which is basically the creation of the school committee, uh, the school committee postings for those positions specifically. Everybody knows up there that the configuration of the city council, of the school committee for next year will be with three elected and three appointees, and the three appointees have a specific backgrounds that are required by, by, by chat. Some of those, some, the three of them require a position or job description for those today. The clerk, Bernard, she sent out the posting, it's a very generic posting with a specific requirement when it comes to education for one of the items, another one when it comes to the background related to law, and the other one, an educator, an educator, a finance, and, and an attorney, or somebody have a law background. So the intent is to work, work those positions out, be able to post it until sometime before, before the election. With plenty of times about, I believe, we are on the way to October, end of October, and that will be close to the seven, eight weeks for those positions, and so we could be able to receive many resumes, and then sequentially during November and December before the new school committee come up, we can have those interviews, we can have those, those three position filled. The, the job posting that I have in front of you is very generic for those three specifics, and, and that will also be worked out with the, with another item that is of the ordinance committee, which is that, the benefit package for each school committee member, including the elected, and as well as the, as the, of the appointees. So the, essentially what we're here today is, is something that is, that is going, it's going to advance the, the process of getting somebody to, they're getting people to apply for the position. This is what, what we're doing today. So the city attorney have worked on these postings in combination with, with different department and the personnel department to come up with this job postings.
Councilors, any questions or comments? Councilor Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When are we thinking to post?
As soon as we have this, this approved by the council, we'll, we'll post it right away.
Okay.
And as, as, the intent is to have this posting for a good amount of time, any, any allowable time, not just ten days.
Okay, so right now you are looking for a motion to send it to the full council so that at the next meeting we can approve or whatever that we decided to do. And have the, the posting.
Right away posted.
Right away, okay.
Yep.
Motion to send to full council.
Just one second, no comment. Maria, can we make, Madam Secretary, can we make a note stating to make sure that the job descriptions are part of the packet? We did receive it via email around three. It was supposed to be printed out for us, but I don't see. Huh? No, I, I don't have a, a copy of it.
Yes.
Oh, it's here?
Yeah.
Did I miss it? I was looking through. I'm sorry, I, I missed it. I was looking through. Yeah, okay. But I did read the email earlier today when it was sent and, and I, I did read the documents, but just to make sure that it's there. Councilor Luzon, he had, he had a motion.
No, no.
Other question. The other thing that's also we need to work is on the salary for these people.
Yeah, the compensation package is at the ordinance committee.
Okay.
This is a separate item. Tomorrow, I, the intent is to go to the, to the ordinance committee and, and advance that item as well.
Okay.
So we can, it's the, 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 the conversation package have to go through and have to be through an ordinance, that need to be, that need to be posted as, with a public hearing. It's a little bit of a different process, but the posting for the job is, could be done together.
So we have an idea on how much is going to be or no?
Uh, I, I do not, but I mean, it's something that is good enough for the, for the people to be able, for the people to apply, obviously. As a counselor, we have a twenty-five thousand dollars stipend. They're going to have a stipend that is something fair, close, not to that level, but I mean, we're working on that, and it's going to be up to the council to decide the amount. But it will be an amount that is representative to the job that the people are doing, especially since we're going to be offering as well something along the health insurance, so something that it could be, potentially be a payment for.
And that amount is coming directly from the school?
Yes, that's, that, that was the last conversation we had.
That we had.
With the superintendent.
With the superintendent.
Correct.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to send.
Motion to send to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Motion to send. There is a second, properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it.
Thank you, councilor.
Thank you. All three, yep. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Are you here for something too?
He's here for budget and finance. Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. All right, councilors.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
She got it down to the left of me.
I think they're both on the right.
Good evening and welcome to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. It is Monday, August 25th, it is now 8:20 PM. Voting members present to my right, we have councillor Wendy Luzon. To my left, the vice chair councillor Vivian Marmo. And we have the council president Giovanni Rodriguez joining us as I speak. Pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to view, listen or view this meeting while in progress may either attend here in the city council chamber or use any of our social media platforms. At this point, can you please join me in the pledge?
I finally meet the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, councillors, we don't have any minutes to approve, so we're straight into new business. The first item is item 340-25. Allocate funds in the amount of $2,316,507 with 60 cents from free cash for DPW capital improvement projects. And we have with us today, DPW director Jorge Jaime, director, you have the floor.
Good evening councillors, Jorge Jaime, DPW director, 200 Common Street. So as you can see in the agenda, I'm submitting the request to, from the free cash for $2.3 million to complete some projects that we are planning to do. Street pavings and sidewalks, street signs and vehicles replacements. So those street pavings that we are suggesting is those streets that we cannot spend Chapter 90 money to fix. Because they were supposed to be done by EverSource. Or they did trenches and, and they haven't repaired yet because they are part of the, the organizations that put money, you know, to be able to, those cities to receive Chapter 90, so we cannot be double dipping, so we cannot invest that money from Chapter 90. Those streets that EverSource is supposed to give us some money to fix. The street signs, so we continue with the plan to have all the streets named. And that way we don't have the mailmen's or laws on those streets that are not, that they, they don't have signs. Vehicle replacements, we're not talking about vehicles for those employees or foremen's, or small vehicles for those foremen's or supervisors. We're talking about a loader that we need, a bulk cap and light towers for construction. So that's why we are requesting tonight. So as you probably know, so the winter is, is coming and we just have one loader and he's probably 10 years old. And we need a backup to have in the city yard, so to be able to be prepared. And the bulk cap and the light, the light tower, the light tower is used to be able to work during nighttime. So we need it for safety requirements.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions or comments? Councillor Marmo.
Are you able to provide details in terms of, cause I'm reading that is 34,800 square, square yards of roadway. $2 million is going towards street paving and sidewalk repairs. I know for the longest time we've battled in receiving funding to fix the sidewalks. How much of the 34,800 square yards is towards the sidewalks?
That's just paving, those yards that I'm, I just mentioned there is for paving. So sidewalks is a lot more expensive, so just to put, to give an example, so we can pave 20 streets with the money that we can do just a block of sidewalks. So sidewalks is very expensive and we are like very behind, so, and, and little by little, so we trying to go to a specific areas. Let's say downtown, we, we are working actively on Essex Street, so to spread out. So right now we done on access, we do all the handicap ramps. We do all the repair, necessary repairs on that. Now we're going to phase two and it's the bricks. You know, we have bricks all around and they very old. And they were not done by, maybe there was no codes before to do it. And they were not done the, the right way, so they don't have sand at the bottom. And now we had to go and remove all those bricks and put the bricks back on the sidewalks to, to continue making our one, our downtown to look historic. So that we, we want to preserve that.
Okay, my apologies, I do see here 4,000 square yards for sidewalk. Do you mind painting a picture as to what does that mean, like how many, how many sidewalks would that cover? And are, is DPW solely focusing on Essex Street, like downtown or are there other?
We already done on Essex Street. This money that we are requesting, so from, from you councillors, you know, you always asking us to go to your district and fix some areas that, that need repairs. So sometimes it's hard for us to pick and choose because city-wise, so there is a lot of needs on sidewalks. But I remember Madam Chair requested sidewalks to be repaired. They need repairs because the basement is getting full of water. So that's, we need to go there and fix it. And that's on Adam Street. We need to, to, to get these funds to be able to go and help that family that is struggling right now. So things like that for us are emergency, we, we request, we receive hundreds of requests every day. But we had to manage what we have, so we had to go to those areas where what is really need upfront, let's say so. Because there is some other sidewalks that they can wait a little bit more time because they can come and tell us, okay, my sidewalk in front of my house is, 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 is bad. But I can show you thousands of square feet that are very bad. And that's when we had to go and determine if it's an emergency or not. And we have a lot of those.
Is this for next fiscal year, this project is to commence?
This fiscal year, if we can get this approved, we, we have a contract, a non-call vendor. We, once we ask, we, once we get the phones, we can go out there. We already have the contract. What we don't have is phones right now.
So it's to start, I mean, we're almost, sad to say already, almost at the end of the year, so to start.
Yeah, you're right.
Immediately into, into.
You're right.
Speaking of sidewalks, one thing, I was recently questioned about Jefferson Street. The emergency that, that occurred on that street and how two years ago the city said that it was going to be fixed. And I know we mentioned Adam Street and I know there's another sidewalk that I mentioned to you as well. But given, I guess, the emerg, the, the priority or it being a state of emergency, I definitely want to put in a plug for Jefferson Street, which you already know. I think I drive the director crazy, but.
We already went there because there, there was an emergency there and, and, and we put up, you know, a lot of sources there together to help that neighborhood. I remember there were a lot of trees.
Yeah.
That fell down and the sidewalks, they looks terrible right now, so. We have all the estimates, what we need is the phones to go and, and fix them. There is a lot of neighbors over there waiting for us to come back. That's why, so I couldn't wait to present this capital project in front of you to be able to go and, 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 and help the neighborhood over there.
To you, did you, do you by any chance, did you by any chance have a conversation with the CFO and asked, what's the current amount that we have under free cash?
Not as, not yet. But I know that I had to wait a little bit until the free cash is certified and then get the phones. But she, she advised me to come in front of you first, so that way we, we, we go ahead in the process and get it approved. And then when the free cash is certified, then we, we have access to the funds.
Can, Maria, can you make a note to send correspondence to the CFO requesting her to provide this committee an update on how much we have in, in the free cash account? Any, co? And free cash? Zero?
It, it needs to be certified.
Sorry, it's been a long night. I got my answer. Yeah, but as of right now, the technic, the technicality is zero until it gets reclassified, re-authorized, recertified and then, okay, all right. Any other? No, but can we do, can we send correspondence to ensure that she is at the full council meeting, just, just in case? Yeah, thank you. I saw councillor, councillor president.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Adrio. So essentially, we have, I have a couple of questions on the sidewalk. Most of the questions will come up as of, you know, the list that we've been working on for such a long time. As of how the sidewalk get done, basically. Can you explain to, to the city, to the constituents, also how a sidewalk perhaps get done once somebody reported as bad? How you guys decide where to go and how to pick and choose those, how prioritize those sidewalks?
We, we have the engineer, the assistant city engineer, we have the streets and parks supervisor. So once we get a call that a sidewalk is in bad condition, so we immediately go there and, and do estimates to repair. But, and again, so we, at the same time, we receive a request from the schools departments, let's say. If in front of Parton School, in front of Hennessy School, so there is some sidewalks that need to be repaired, we, we put those as priorities. Because those same kids maybe from the property that are, that is requesting to fix the sidewalk in front of their house. So those kids maybe go to those schools and they need access to the sidewalks. And, and for us around the schools, we, we put that as a priority, so we treat it as like an emergency.
Right, and so essentially that is that if you call up, they, they put you on, you guys put it on the list, evaluate if there is a need for the sidewalk and then work around, work around that list based on priorities?
Yes, as we do with the streets, we, we have a software where we put the, the request and we marked it down like red, orange, yellow or green. So that will tell us which one needs to be done first, depending what color we mark that space, with what color we mark the space.
All right, so what is the percentage of the, of the total amount that is expected to be spent on sidewalks?
So we looking to, yeah, we looking to spend 1 million in paving, 1 million in sidewalks. And the rest that is 316,000 to buy the equipments that we need.
So another question that I have.
It, it can be a little bit more, a little bit less, depending on the, on the bid. So we always go out to bid and that will tell us the amount.
Okay. You also mentioned that you have, you're gonna have a street signs on, on, on the project. What, it's, it, what is gonna be kinda like, you know, the amount that we're gonna spend on?
Let's say with less than $20,000, we can continue putting the, the names to the streets.
So just less than 20?
Yes, because we already have some funds that are left so that we can continue using. So, but just to be like safe, so we are locating around $20,000 from this project for a street sign.
What, what can you do with 20,000 when it comes to signs perhaps?
So the street names are not that expensive. What is most expensive is the setup, like the pole and things like that, but, so let's say the, the street names is not, is not that expensive.
Have you thought about having a setup on the city that we do, we do those bring them locally?
Absolutely, we always think about that, even though I, I think I spoke with you before to be able to have a crew like from, from the city to be able to fix sidewalks. The thing is like abilities are things that are put in front of us when we go to personal department or to see the CFO to propose that. So most of those employees, they come for a couple of days and they, you know, a couple of days after we lost them because they get injuries, things like that. So that's, that's a very, let's say, heavy job that it needs a lot of effort. And most of the times of the, the employees get injured, that's why we lost the last two or three employees that we had dedicated to sidewalks.
Right, another question that I have, throughout, this is a genetic type of situation that has happened throughout the state. And I want, I want to make you aware of, of an issue that the state has been facing. The sidewalk lately, there was a new mix within the state related, a new concrete mix within the state that actually are used for sidewalks. And that being some type of reaction with some type of chemicals that the state haven't figured it out yet. But I know that the spellings, which, spelling on sidewalks, which reflect on little marks, little holes that are throughout the sidewalks, I have seen that happening in the city of Lawrence. So I just want you guys to be aware that some sidewalks that we've been faring, they, we might, we might face an issue. I would say that I saw that on the, at the Parton School, no, 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 sorry, at the.
Manchester Street.
Manchester Street, but I also noticed on, at the Frost, on the sidewalk that is, it looked beautiful. There is some spelling there that, that, that might become an issue in the future. So that's an issue that has been going on throughout the state. Investing a lot of money, a million dollars on, on sidewalks, we gotta make sure like, you know, at least the methodology we, we use, workability as well play a role on that and we don't, we don't waste the money. Because those sidewalks that have, have spelt, the duration, the life duration of those will be significantly low. So that's something that should be on the looks.
Yeah, so we, we had some issues on a couple of sidewalks and the, the assistant city engineer contacted the company and they promised to come back and fix them, so we expect that to happen.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Oh, you do, okay. Councillor Luzon, you're gonna say, you're gonna say yes or no? Yeah, so.
Madam Chair, it has been a long day, a long, a long day. So this is not Chapter 90 funds, money?
This is not Chapter 90.
Yes, for the people that are, are watching. And, and I'm not concerned about what I'm going to say now, cause I know your department, at least when I send requests, I, I get a response immediately. And, but I would like to know that, and you said that based on the condition of the sidewalks, you're gonna make a determination or the system will make a determination to where to repair the sidewalks?
Yeah, that, that's what I said, and I, and I also said that we always prioritize the schools. And we have plenty of schools around in, in Lawrence. So sometimes if we receive a request in a neighborhood and the school is requesting to do sidewalks around their area, so we always gonna go in front of the schools and, and do our job.
So this is, that will be the priority for now, plus any other sidewalks?
Plus all those that are marked down red, as I said, and those requests that are waiting there for years.
Okay. And I understand that you plan ahead, cause I know that I submitted something a year and a half ago, and, a year ago. And it was done this year. So this is, these funds will be used to repair sidewalks that are a priority now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Cause we get so many requests from constituents about sidewalks repair. And I don't want them to think that now we have millions of dollars or thousands of dollars to spend on that. So yes, to be, so to be clear, the priority will be, as you mentioned, the sidewalks near schools and the ones that are, that need immediate repair?
That's correct.
Okay, then thank you director.
That is correct, yes. That is correct, yes.
formal?
Director, you mentioned how certain streets get coded. Red would be the most, like the one that has the highest priority, correct?
That is correct.
How do you determine as to what streets are coded red? Is it based off of you receive a complaint from one of your counselors? Or do you have someone within your department, whether it's yourself or someone that does a site analysis of the whole city of Lawrence, and they are coding what should be considered red?
Yes, from the engineering team, they always go to the side and visit the streets, and we bring the list, and then we sit down with EverSource and ask them, where do you have projects? And if they have projects, like in one of the streets that we just choose, then we move to another street. Let's say, we were not able to do grants, but EverSource calls us, oh, we're gonna do a project on certain street that we, that you put in the list for this year, and then we move the sources to another location. But it's always gonna be determined by the condition of the road. We always go to the side, and again, we discuss with water department, with sewer, with EverSource. For example, Water Street, you see that we just did the portion of from the, let's say, Merrose to Bennett Street. Then from Bennett to the bridge to Broadway, it was not done. It was, it is because water department has a project there. They're gonna do the project at the end of this month, and then we can come back in October and pay that portion of Water Street. Our, so commitment is to go and try to do our best to give the city of Lawrence better roads from now on. So, another thing that I would like to mention with the paving, why we come here to request like free cash to do paving, let's say, a very important street, David Street. He's not accepted by the state. We cannot spend chapter ninety funds. That's when we have to go with his free cash and do it. But we need to start the process to identify those streets that are not accepted and come in front of you, that's something that we actually doing, to put it on the list and be able to accept it by the city and then present it to the state and be able to spend chapter ninety in the future, so. But that's something that we're working right now.
So, what is determined as, what is the criteria for a street that is accepted by the state? And what makes a street not accepted by the state?
So, to give you an example, so I don't remember from the top of my head the name of the street right now, but it's the new project that was done on Andover Street, at the end of Andover Street, behind McDonald's. They did a completely new street that goes into Andover Street. That street hasn't been accepted, but it's, it's an actual street. It has all, its sidewalks, it have all the services, and it's not a sex, so we cannot expand chapter ninety funds over there. Probably, that is really that I just mentioned, is not on the list of the, it was not maybe, there was no maybe a street there, and the city built it, and it was not put on the list. An alleyway is not accepted by the state. It's, you can see, it's on a street, but it's not a sector, so we cannot just put chapter ninety funds over there, but we can actually use city funds to do that.
And I'm gonna take this opportunity to mention how things should work, and how, and how important is to have a director of the department here asking for these funds. In the same way, when a constituents ask for something to be done in their street, or a request for a sidewalk, or maybe to paving of the street, what we do is actually use the department, we send emails, and I'm talking about following the right process. We, or I send, I think we all do the same thing. So, we, I send emails to the director, and I see see the deputies, and I inform them of, of the request made by the constituent. My job is not to send any request to the mayor's office. My job is to inform the directors, and most of you are doing, from my perspective, are doing a great job, responding and listening to the constituents and to the counselors that are sending their requests. So, there is, there is a process in place to have something done in the city. The counselor sends an email to the department, not to the mayor's office, because I know the mayor's occupied with so many other responsibilities, and that's why he has director, and director like Dr. Jorge Jaime, that is always responding, and responding to the emails that at least I sent. So, I just wanted to say that for the record, thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
You can say doctor too.
I almost said it, doctor.
And Chair, again, for the opportunity now, talking about the streets. So, before I was talking about the sidewalk, now let's talk about the streets. So, Director, there is a couple of things here that I want, I wanna make sure that we clear, and the council, once we send that up, once we send this item up to the full council, we can, we can have this discussion at least at this level. So, so we are, we are, we, the city received about one point three million dollars for chapter ninety, right? This year?
One point two something.
Yeah, almost one point three, kind of. That's, that's been trending until this year, about one point, one point two, one point three million, right?
Now, we also spending one point seven from free cash.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get that, we're gonna get that to that point. So, but every, every year, we got like around that, that amount of dollars.
From chapter ninety, yes.
Next year will be something completely different, according to the, to the secretary, that they expand for next year funds, and we're gonna have a lot more money, but we don't know yet. We haven't get to that bridge. So, essentially, that's the amount of dollars that we get from chapter ninety. And we also, if I remember correctly, we actually approved funding for the APAP fund, but that it, that it went to, this year and last year, it went to?
Five millions.
Yeah, about five millions that went over to fixing up the roads. So, that was about five millions?
About five million, so that it was put into paving, parks, and buildings.
And do you know like an average, how much you spend on sidewalk, not on sidewalk, on road? From that, out of that five million, about?
From free cash, so this year, we are spending one point seven millions. Last year was around that amount too.
Just on road?
Just from free cash, just from free cash.
Yeah, just from free cash.
In roads, yes. So, adding free cash, or we tripling the amount that?
So, basically, this year, it is safe to say that we have spent about three million dollars on road?
That's, that's right.
So, one point seven come from the, from the city, and one point three from the state. So, out of that one point three, we have no approval whatsoever, the council have no approval whatsoever. But out of that one point seven million, it was approved by the council?
It was approved
Out of the free cash?
Two thousand twenty-two?
Yeah, two thousand twenty-two, yeah, exactly. So, also, we have, we have a source of fixing up road, which is EverSource. EverSource have been fixing roads in the city of Lawrence.
So, what we're doing?
On the moratorium, right?
What we're doing with EverSource, so every time that they do trenches in our road, so we have roads that we, if they were fixed in the last five years, we call that, that is in moratorium, under moratorium, so.
So, they need to fix curb to curb?
If it's more than that, so it's not under moratorium, so. But we're doing monthly meetings with them. And right now, what they doing is, if they go and open one of the roads that we are currently paving, they had to go back and do it curb to curb, so the next year. But that's, that happened the next year of the project. Then, if they go to a road that they do just a trench, but it's not under moratorium, so they had to give us money to be able to combine that money with the city funds and go back and pave that street. So, why we doing that? Because their responsibility is just to go and fix the trench. But the street maybe is in very bad condition because it was paved, it has, it was paved in more than seven years before the project. Then, we combine the city funds and with the money that EverSource is giving us now, and go and pave the whole street. That happened with a couple of streets that we are doing right now, and that's helping us.
For that funds that we have, for that, that way that we use, that EverSource go up there, and if it is within the moratorium, they need to fix it curb to curb, meaning that from edge to edge. That's one way. And also, you just mentioned that if it's not within the moratorium, the moratorium is five years, in case people don't know up there. If it is a road that has been fixed for five years or less, and then they need to fix, if they do the trench, they need to fix from curb to curb on that road. If it is not within the five years of the city been fixed, though, that road, that means that they provide us money. And then we, we combine it with local funds and be able to pave that road. So, essentially, the city council approve the money that come from EverSource, once they, they send it to us, right?
That's gonna be the second item tonight.
The second item, yeah, we're gonna be dealing with that.
I'm requesting the authorization to spend.
And then you mix it up with this portion of money as well, and be able to do more?
That is correct.
That's correct, okay. Alright, there is only other source of funds to be able to fix road in the city of Lawrence? Or is just that?
Free cash and chapter ninety.
Free cash, chapter ninety, and EverSource?
You're right.
Alright.
Alright, good question. So, this one is to be used this year?
Once we get?
It's weather permitting.
It's weather permitting.
But the intention is to, to be able to continue doing, you know, our job and try to, you know, deliver the most street that we can during this construction season.
We just wanna make sure that we talk about this before something, something happen. Is the company gonna be doing work prorated before the free cash get approved? Or?
No, absolutely not.
We're gonna wait for the free cash to be certified?
Absolutely not.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we ask the question.
We, we, we wait to have the funds in our account projects, and then we move forward with that.
Okay. Alright, no more questions, Madam Vice Chair.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to send it to the full council, whatever recommend this.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Chair, take care of it. Oh, I have. Motion was made by Council President to send a committee with a favorable, favorable recommendation seconded by Councilor Luzon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you. The last item on our agenda is item three fifty-six dash twenty-five, authorization to expend funds up to five hundred thousand dollars. And this is through the EverSource Street Repair Reimbursement. Director Jaime, you have the floor.
So, as, as we were mentioning in the last item, so because we learned a little bit about what this item is, and is, I'm looking for the authorization to expand an additional five hundred thousand dollars from EverSource to be set up in the project number nineteen four eleven, DPW Street Paving. So, we set up that account because in two thousand and twenty-three, we came in front of you with the same request. It was because we agree with us, with EverSource, that they are going to give us money for those streets that they were doing the trenches, and the streets were not under moratorium, so that's why last year, in between two thousand and twenty-three, until today, so we have received the five hundred thousand dollars from EverSource, and we already expended. Now, in front, we are in front of you again to request authorization to expand an additional five hundred thousand dollars that we expecting to get. We haven't get all the money yet, but we estimate that we're gonna get it very soon. We already sending the invoices to them, and they already send us some of the checks. But we expecting that we're gonna go over the five hundred thousand dollars, but I don't want to be like in front of you here every time that they send us a check for twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, so. I'm looking to get five hundred thousand dollars authorized to expand it. And when we pass that amount, so then I come back in front of you again to request the additional amount.
Counselors, any questions or comments? Council President?
How much we have on that account currently?
Currently, we have one hundred and two thousand dollars.
One hundred and two thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
This fiscal year, twenty twenty-six.
So, and that's, that's, I'm assuming that that's the money that went above the five hundred thousand that was previously authorized?
You're right.
Right. So, how are you, this is a technical question from my, from my own knowledge. How you guys calculate this, this, this road? Based on what, based on area, based on volume, based on?
Yes, it's.
Density?
They do their own estimates, and we do our estimates, so it's basically the same thing. It's a module that they use, and they, while I requested them to do it with us because they were doing it with other communities, and we never got into an agreement. So, once I was put into their DPW office, so I saw that opportunity for us to be able to manage the final paving of the streets when they come and do trenches and things like that. So, we, we, we are confident in the module that they using, and the same estimates that we do, they always are about the same amount. So, that's the, the way that we doing it right now.
You guys are doing anything different compared to what it was done back then when Brian Peña, Brian Peña, not Dee Peña, Brian Peña was the director of the DPW?
This, this, this is new, this is a new agreement that was not done in the past.
Okay, so is that, is that different on the formula?
The formula that they use is, is gonna be the same.
Okay, so the program started back then, a long time ago, because I remember approving this type of fund in the past.
No, it was not done in the past, because one of the things that EverSource was, they were complaining about that the city never got into an agreement with them to be able to do this type of agreements again, so. Because the cities always complain about the final repairs that they do on the streets. But they, with this, they have the opportunity, you know, that the city will do their own repairs, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to complain to nobody.
Alright, essentially, again, this is, this is used together with the, with the public fund, with the local funds, separate than chapter ninety. And multiple reason why I'm saying this is because, you know, sometimes you want to clarify to the people, the sources that we use to be able to fix the road, and the city council have a huge, a major involvement when it comes to fixing up the road in the city. Because we do approve different sorts of funds. As a matter of fact, two of the three funds that we, that we use to fix the road is being approved by the council. So, and, and then the combination and the coordination, and, and the, and the fact that we have a final set on the approval, we, we also, some counselors feel like that should be more part of the decision making. As a white road and stuff like that should be fixed, obviously, we all represent the community.
And I thank you for the support that you've been giving to our department. So, without your support, I think it's impossible to. So without your support, I think it's impossible to run like we, with, you know, with the funds that we really get. We always under budget. But we always try to do, we always try to do what we, uh, to deliver to the constituents what they deserve. Uh, we always make it happen and because we always come like, okay, the budget is not enough, the operating budget, right? I come in front of you to request capital funds to be able to complete all the budget. Sometime the weather like, cause we have a very short period of, of construction periods that do not allow us to, you know, complete all the projects, but we all were ahead of the game and we always planning in the winter what we gonna do in the summer. That's why you go and see your right and left and you always gonna see DPW doing something. Because, um, I, I love to plan and I have a great team that is supporting us and and they there to support you too. So I, I love when I receive calls from constituents, constituents and I love when I receive emails or calls from counselors requesting something to, to be done in their district because it's something that I don't need a supervisor to go and see. We actually receiving it from somebody that is there walking those streets. And we happy to go and fix that, but because that's something that is gonna be out of our radar. And it's easier when, when you have no five supervisors, but a hundred thousand constituents there uh, trying to find an issue and call us and, and get it solved. So I'm, I'm happy to serve this community because they are proactive like that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to,
Second.
Motion has been made by the Council President, seconded by the Vice Chair. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Director?
Thank you.
Oh. The quarterly report.
Okay.
We actually do read those, but I know people think that we don't, but we do. At least I do. I can only speak for myself. Um, Counselors, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made, perfectly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it.